All right, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call the meeting of the City Council to order at 6:05 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Navarrete. Wilson, here. Tillman.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Patton.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
So tonight, the City Council passed a remote participation ordinance. In order for the aldermen to participate remotely, you have to have a quorum of the aldermen. We do have a quorum of the aldermen. We will need a motion to admit Alderman Navarrete and Alderman Patton. So for the record, is there a motion tonight to admit Alderman Navarrete and Alderman Patton?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Gardner to admit Alderman Navarrete and Alderman Patton via remote participation at 6:06 PM. So for the record, we do have a quorum of aldermen present, four present physically, five present physically, and two participation remotely. Probably take a vote on that. Madam Clerk, can you please take a-
Prior to the vote, can we have the reason stated for the record?
Alderman Navarrete, Alderman Patton, please state your reason for remote participation, please.
I have a reason for this. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Alderman Navarrete, I expect there's no work travel. I'm so shy about it for work. I am also treading in for work.
So the attorney has advised us to just need a record roll call vote. Madam Clerk, can you please take the record roll call vote on the remote participation for Alderman Navarrete and Alderman Patton?
So everybody who is here.
Here, present, physically.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Smith.
Thank you, everyone. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which this stands, my nation, our empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we'd like to ask Pastor Stokes to come to the mic and say a word of prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Let us pray. God, our Father, we thank you for this and that opportunity to be alive. We're so grateful for your care, your providence, your sovereignty. We thank you for this opportunity. We have to serve, to be in the room to make decisions for constituents. We pray for great days ahead for Calumet City and its residents, and we give you praise on our actions. We keep these men and women in this room who serve so well, and we give you praise in advance for what you are doing. In Jesus' name, amen.
I would ask before we start the council meeting for a moment of silence for the life of Alderman DeAndre Tillman's grandfather and Alderman Director Cheryl Tillman's father, Lorenzo Washington, who was not only a veteran but also a dear friend of Calumet City. So if everyone could please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. Alderman Tillman, I know your heart is heavy, but-
Thank you.
-thank you for always being a great public servant. We know your grandfather adored you, so we want to wish him well and pray for his great career and anything you need, just let us know.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I am sending out a letter to everyone that the flags will fly half staff all next week in honor, so that will be done. We'll direct all departments to do so. Before we begin our public comment, we do have a presentation from Cook County and the Government Association from Clerk of the Circuit Court, Iris Martinez. Mr. Sean Halligan would like to present. He isn't under informational items, but Sean, if you could step to the mic and provide the information to the City Council, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Sean Halligan. I'm the Intergovernmental Affairs Officer for the Clerk of the Circuit Court of Cook County. I'm just here to provide a public service announcement regarding some of the services that some residents in your community can avail themselves to. Recently, in 2022, in December, the Clerk of the Circuit Court established a customer call service center that has serviced over 249,000 individuals thus far, where people actually get their calls answered with ideally within one to two minutes and speak to a human voice to put them in the legal system where they need to be directed, anywhere from a traffic case to a criminal case and so forth. One of the events we participated in in the Calumet City community was with the Violence Prevention Initiative. We did that with a clerk in the community event earlier in the year. The clerk in the community events are initiate our team into the public. We bring our team to the public, making services of the office more accessible and fostering a better understanding of the needs of the public. One of those issues is obviously expungements and ceilings, which play a critical role in helping individuals with criminal records rebuild their lives. Over 5,600 backlog petitions have been reduced to under 100 since, and in early 2024, the clerk, Office of the Clerk of the Circuit Court will entertain and have a whole division to expungements and sealing of records. And recently, in October, the Clerk of the Circuit Court in the Markham Courthouse opened the Domestic Violence Service Center where victims of domestic violence are, can get orders of protection and so forth, avail themselves to counseling and deal with some of those entities so they're in a more private environment to foster, better foster the benefits of such programs. So with that, I appreciate the council's time, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your time. Thank you, and thank you to everybody in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Our next item is public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on any item on the agenda tonight? So please step to the mic and state your issue.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As far as the items on the agenda, I have not had a chance to review the items on the agenda, but I would like to address text messages that I have been getting as, I'm sure that many residents of Calumet City have been getting. And I don't know what's going on with our city clerk and Yoda Fix, but I would like to ask everyone in the room to send prayers and love her way because we never know what's going on, and it's disheartening to receive such messages when you're going through your family issues and everything that's going on. But I would like to say, as far as myself, that I encountered water pressure issues with the recent freeze, and I would like to thank personally my alderwoman, Alderwoman Wilson, and Alderman Gardner for being the only two aldermen to reach out to me to make sure that they checked on me, to make sure that my needs were addressed. And I did apply for a permit to have an electrician to come and check out my home as a result of the September 17 flooding, and they were told that I needed to write some kind of letter stating that the damage in my home was due to the flood, and I was not notified of any such need or what have you because I was just told that whomever we had, if they could do the work and they were contracted already within Calumet City, which they are, then our fees would be waived. We still have the sewer water problem. I'm not sure if anyone else does, but we still have water leakage in our home, and I just don't know what else to do with it. As I've stated before in previous City Council meetings, I do work for Jackson Hewitt Tax Service, and I did receive an early advance refund loan, and if anyone would like to also receive that loan, then they can visit our office at 515 Burnham in Calumet City. You can get a refund advanced for up to $6,500 based on the amount of your return. And again, that address is 515 Burnham. We also have another office in Walmart and Lansing, Jackson Hewitt Kiosk, and I'll be happy to provide cards for anyone who would like them so that they can get any extra assistance times a hour. The IRS does not open up for filing until the 29th, which could be a long stretch for some people, but however, they can get up to $6,500 for an advance on their refunds to at least help out financially if the city has overlooked something unbeknownst to them. But I know I can only speak for myself when I say that I'm sick and tired of being put in the middle of political issues that have nothing to do with me. The only thing that I can address is that my city, my homeowner's taxes have gone up at least about $7,500, which has taken my mortgage up an extra $600. At that rate, for a 1,250 square foot home, I am looking other places to live because I will not pay that amount for those taxes until they're explained to me where our money is going because it surely is not going to the school system. The teachers, I have students in all schools, and they told me that they have not received raises. If the money is supposed to be going towards education and raises and books, then I'd like to know how it's allocated, and that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the City Council? If not, item five on the agenda, approval minutes. These minutes are minutes that we explained to the council that were omitted from the last agenda, but they're here tonight. Everyone should have received a copy of the minutes. Are there any questions regarding the minutes as presented tonight? If not, can someone make a motion to approve the items as presented?
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Williams. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Patton. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Tillman.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, reports to standing committees. Alderman Navarrete, we'll start with you. Do you have a report tonight, Alderman?
It's not important to you, ma'am. I will put out there that we're meeting with the city engineer and having public works on Monday, or just by cracking public works to each other.
Thank you, Alderman. Finance, Alderman Gardner.
No reports tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Public Safety, Alderman Williams.
No report. Thank you.
Public Utilities, Alderman Patton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ordinance and Resolutions, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. We completed the review process of an ordinance amendment that was recommended by the Ordinance and Resolutions Committee at the December 2023 meeting regarding an ordinance amending Division Four Barber Shops and Beauty Salons. Unfortunately, it didn't make today's agenda, but it should be on the next City Council agenda.
Thank you.
Bits and Licensing, Alderman Smith.
Yes, we are receiving business license applications daily. As of today, January 25, we have received approximately 250 business license applications for processing, collected $154,885 in business license fees. We're working very diligently to ensure that all the businesses are complying and receive their business licenses in a timely manner. Just a reminder, business owners, please complete and submit your 2024 business license applications online immediately by going to calumetcity.org/business-licensed-renewal-application. Also, emit February PET license invoices will be available as well.
That's it. Thank you, Alderman. Health, Education, and Welfare, Alderwoman Wilson.
Thank you. Well, two weeks ago, we partnered with the Tomorrow Two Foundation for their youth violence mentor, MNC, luncheon, and it was a success. Thank you to the youth of the community and in the program for coming out. We had wonderful guest speakers who supported the youth, answered many questions that they have, and took the theme of "I am qualified to be me" and ran with it and to define what it means to be qualified to be you. I would like to call H E W Committee meeting, Health, Education, and Welfare meeting for January 31. I am concerned about several things regarding the text message that the second ward resident mentioned, and I am going to ask our HR director to come to the meeting because no personal information regarding anybody's health should be put out there to the public, and so I would like to know who has access to those records. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Under the mayor's report, tonight we have some great news for the City Council. I will let our engineers say that. Before I do that, though, I want to present our city treasurer with our EPA award, our EPA sign that we have. Many of you know that Calumet City got the highest level of EPA Green Award. We received our sign. One of the signs is up front. The other sign I am going to present to our city treasurer because he has worked his butt off on EPA issues. He's worked his butt off on to make sure that Calumet City is a green city. This designation by the federal EPA just codifies the hard work that city treasurer has done, but also the city of Calumet City to make sure when residents apply for solar projects, when residents apply for any kind of EPA grants that we use, and our work with the EPA is solid. So, Mr. Treasurer, I've got the sign right behind you that I want to present to you, and we'll make sure our public works put them up, and you can tell them where you want it.
I've been working hard, but it's waiting for the prize.
Well, Mayor, City Council, this has been a long time in coming. My thanks to Mayor Jones and the entire City Council, their cooperation during this process. A long time ago, we sat down, and this is related to the electric congregation program. We made the decision to try to go green and make Calumet City a green city, so it's taken a while, but it's finally come to fruition. So thanks to everyone who's involved.
In addition to that, we, the city is in partnership with a company that's going to put electric chargers, charging stations, one here at City Hall and one at our Calumet City Library. So in addition to our EPA green technology, we will have an electric charging station here at our city and then also at our Calumet City Public Library. We know that there's an estimated 10,000 electric vehicles in Calumet City, and we want to make sure that they take advantage of this and also that there's a place to charge the electric vehicles here in our city because the nearest charging station is probably 10 to 15 miles away. So it helps us, but congratulations, Mr. Treasurer, on working hard on it.
Thanks.
Our next announcement is from our city engineer. We, anonymous engineer, did you pass these out to the council?
I did not, but if you'd like me to, I'd have copies available.
One of the biggest things that we hear from residents is they want to see construction on the ground, we want to see trucks on the ground, and tonight, through the work of each one of our council members and through our engineers, we are going to start construction in Calumet City. We told the residents about our bonds, we told you about the sewer projects that we had, and we also tell you about some of the cleaning and money that we're using for the bonds. So our engineer is going to talk about that, but also talk about our streets that are going to be under reconstruction soon and the projects that we have right now. So Matt Berger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Quick update, it's not going to be quick because there's a lot of things happening in the city which we're excited about here, but we're going to start off with the projects that are under construction. As you know, the lead service line project is under construction. We're about 70% complete. Work has kind of halted just on account of the weather. We don't want to make a mess of the residents' front yards or their houses since we're working, you know, in those areas. But that will pick up next week again, and we're hoping then to push it forward and try to get that one wrapped up this summer. Happy to say, too, that the emergency sewer cleaning and televising, we had a pre-construction meeting just yesterday, and work is slated to begin on February 5, and it will be completed sometime in April. That is for five miles of sewer throughout the city. Every ward is going to be involved in that, so you will see trucks on the street in a little over a week for that project. We had a kickoff meeting yesterday, also two, Public Works Commissioner Thomas and I, with IDOT and also their contractor, Deconstruction, and the River Oaks Drive is going to construction, and it is slated for an April 1 construction date, and that project will go to August. The improvement will be a road resurfacing project of River Oaks Drive, and it'll go from I-94 all the way to Torrance Avenue. We're happy to also report that there's several projects that are out to bid right now. Right now, the two of them will have a bid opening at City Hall on January 30. Technically, three, but they are Wilson Avenue, Paxton to Yates, and 157th Reconstruction, which will be superior to Burnham Avenue, and then there's also another alternate on there, too, for 157th Reconstruction from Burnham to Wentworth. Torrance Avenue, that project went out to bid, and bids were received on January 21. It's in contract negotiation and award is pending. I'll have additional updates on that one, but that project will be from Sibley Boulevard all the way down to 170th Street in Calumet City, and that will complete, be a complete road resurfacing that will wrap up all of Torrance Avenue in Calumet City, so it'll all now be improved once that work is done, and that one is tentatively slated to go in about April. Forest Hill Sewer Replacement, that project will be on the street on Tuesday. That's when the letting is, and then the bid opening is slated for February 21 here at City Hall. Buffalo Avenue, the sewer lining, same thing, that one will go out on the 30th, and it is slated for the 21st. And then a couple of updates here, one of which that I know that the treasurer's office will be happy to hear, is we submitted the first pay request back for I-94. That's the PAL study, Planning Environmental Linkage Study of Dalton Road, to turn it into a full-blown interchange. That has to be studied first before they can just go out and do that. Right now, it only has access to and from Chicago. This would open it up to go south to I-80. But we did submit the first. That one is 100% funded by the federal government and also to state, the state. CMAP and MWRD, we have been coordinating with them about a study. It's a sub-area study. We are meeting with Aldermen Navarrett and Gardner tomorrow about it to go through the final report, and then it is anticipated that there will be a public presentation to share the results of that project, and that one is also going to have some of the guidelines that maybe will help us with redevelopment of Forsyth Village. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Levy Project, the survey work is about 65% complete, and the next wave of survey field work that residents will see will be between Burnham Avenue and the Burnham Greenway Trail, so that's the western terminus of the project. And then, last but not least, we're pleased to announce that the sidewalk project, we've coordinated that with the Public Works Department and the mayor's office, and that one, we will have additional follow-up with all the aldermen on it coming up here very soon, and the goal is to try and get that one let in April. We have more updates, but we don't want to keep everyone here. We want to let you all get to your family on other projects, so.
Thank you, Alderman. I almost said Alderman, but thank you, Matt Berger, for that. We want to elevate you to Alderman. Any questions for Matt?
Yes, thank you again, Matt Berger. My question is, for the $25,000 allocation per ward, would you highlight that that is a significant increase from the past previous two to three years?
Yeah, traditionally, we have done about $100,000 for citywide. In this round, it's anticipated to be about $175,000 for the sidewalk program.
And we should be able to get more homes covered. I know I have a large list every year, and so does Alderman Navarrett, so I'm excited to know that we have more money to work with.
Yes, and we also have looked at also two ways to streamline things a little bit, and we're coordinating that with our Public Works Department to try and make sure that everyone's pleased with the locations and the work that's going to, the locations where the work will take place.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, under City Council Reports, Alderman Smith. Seventh Ward, Alderman Smith, City Council Reports.
Just want to remind the residents, our monthly Town Hall is every third Saturday at DA's Banquet Hall, the next one being February 17. Unfortunately, my apologies, this last week I was unable to make the meeting due to a family matter, but I will be at the February meeting. If you have any questions on that, please contact the office at 708-891-8197 or email at asmith@calumetcity.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Patton, Sixth Ward, Alderman.
No need to, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Fifth Ward, Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just encourage the Fifth Ward residents to continue to contact my office, 708-891-8195, in reference to any concerns or ward matters that you may have, and also I just want to lastly highlight, the sub-area plan is in the final review. I, myself, and Alderman Navarrett will be a part of the Zoom call tomorrow, and I am excited to hear the plans for the eastern section of the Fifth Ward and the First Ward, the development initiatives, the transportation initiatives, and I'm just excited about it. So look forward to reporting that to you all. The next Town Hall meeting, I plan on having CMAP in attendance, so be on the lookout for the dates for the Town Hall meeting. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Fourth Ward, Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items, very briefly. First, going down to God, that makes all things possible. February 5 will be the Third and Fourth Ward Meeting, 6:30 PM at Downey Park Fieldhouse. We will start promptly at 6:30. If you have any ward issues, please don't hesitate to contact the office at 708-212-2240 or 708-891-8194. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Third Ward, Alderman Tillman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank you, Mayor, and everybody else around the city and everybody in the audience for the condolences to myself and my family. That was really nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Second one, Ward, Alderwoman Wilson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who attended Conversation and Cocktails last night at Don Pedro. A time was had in the Second Ward, or with the Second Ward. It was great adult conversation. We encourage you to stay tuned with the Second Ward for our upcoming events and more conversations. Second Ward, February 7, from 6:30 to 8, will be our Second Ward Meeting. Second Ward, February seventh, from six-thirty to eight, will be our Second Ward Meeting at Higher Ground Community Church at four-fifteen Saginaw. Again, that's February seventh, from six-thirty PM to eight PM at Higher Ground Community Church, four-fifteen Saginaw. I would like to thank my team and the residents of the Second Ward. Before I came in, Girls Inc. Chicago announced that I'm an honoree for the She Shines Award, which, um, will take place March twenty-third, um, of this year. Um, so, Second Ward, get out your best digs because you got to go with me. Um, we're going to represent the best ward in the city of Calumet City. Um, should you need me, do not hesitate to call me. I can be reached at seven-zero-eight-five-eight-six-four-nine-nine-zero. That's seven-zero-eight-five-eight-six-four-nine-nine-zero. Please text me if you cannot call me. Um, I do accept the text messages. One other thing, I am reopening the list for streetlights. I was on the five-hundred block of Bensley, it is way too dark in that alley, so we're going to go ahead and submit some things to, uh, Mayor Jones for review and approval. Um, get some lights out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Navarrette, First Ward?
Thank you, Alderman, uh, Mayor, I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor. Uh, as far as we go, we, uh, with the city engineer and Alderman Gardner, uh, we are excited that the sub-area plan, uh, from CMAP, with CMAP assistance is near complete. Uh, this again will prioritize, uh, important initiatives and projects in the first to this ward, so I want to thank all the residents who participated in the surveys, uh, in the workshops. I mean, we're excited to, to show that, um, that the first of this ward, uh, in the coming weeks. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Item eight, or informational items to be accepted and placed on file. Uh, before we, uh, take a motion for that, I just want to highlight our Deputy Chief, Pete Bendinelli, and read this letter from Congresswoman Robert Kelly. Um, Pete, as you know, has been real on it with grants with the Fire Department and, you know, really taking up the mantle of residents who suffered during the recent storm. So, first want to congratulate you on that, uh, Deputy Chief Bendinelli, but also read this letter from Congresswoman Kelly, want to congratulate, from Congresswoman Kelly, I want to congratulate you, Pete, on your completion of the Federal Emergency Management, uh, U.S. Fire Administration National Fire Academy Executive Fire Officer Program that is a long title of a program. The EFO program is a highly competitive multi-year training program for a senior-level fire and emergency medical services leaders in the United States and worldwide. Your completion of this unique program is a testament to your dedication to service and the safety of Calumet City residents. I'm confident that the EFO program has provided you with invaluable experience and insight that will benefit your community. Thank you again for all your hard work and congratulations on this significant accomplishment. So, let's give a round of applause to our Deputy Fire Chief. And thank, uh, Congresswoman Kelly for that, uh, that good recognition. Is there a motion to accept and place on file item eight A through D?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, is there a second? Second by Alderman Smith, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes, these items are accepted and placed on file. Item nine, new business items, uh, are there any questions regarding items nine A through three? I accept, Alderman Gardner, item three has to be, to say amended?
No, that's, no, it does not. I, I clarify it, and this is good to go as it's presented.
Gotcha. Are there any questions about items nine A through three? If not, uh, can someone make a motion to approve items, new business items nine A, one, two, and three?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith. Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Patton? Patton?
He's not on the call anymore, I don't think. Doesn't know why. Uh, motion is approved, items are approved, uh, we have no building permits, no fixed garage, uh, no fences and garage under C resolutions. Items two, three, and four, uh, we will table till the next council meeting, um, per the grant agreement, so we could take action, Alderman Tillman, on resolution and ordinance items one and two.
So moved.
Motion, motion is approved, items one and two, uh, second by Alderman Smith. Matt? Yes. One and two. I mean, one, I'm sorry. I'm, yes, item one. So, the motion is for, to approve resolution, item one. Motion made by Alderman Tillman, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete?
Yes.
Wilson? I'm sorry. Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Item D, or financial matters, are there any questions, uh, items, uh, D one through thirty-seven, Alderman Gardner? Alderman Gardner, to make a motion to approve an items D one through thirty-seven?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner to approve, second by Alderman Smith. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Navarrete? Navarrete?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Unfinished business, uh, Alderman Tillman?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Unfinished business, Alderman Williams?
Uh, just real quick, I just wanted to publicly express my sincere condolences to the Tillman family. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gardner, unfinished business?
Yes, um, I want to express my condolences to Alderman Tillman and his family during this time, and praying for you all. Um, secondly, I would like to, uh, congratulate, uh, former Lieutenant Derek Bryant, uh, in his new capacity as chief, fire chief, and also thank him for his years of service, many years of service to the city of Calumet City and its residents, uh, over twenty-five years, so, like to definitely thank him for that. That's all.
And Alderman, he sent me the video to forward to everyone, too, you know? Derek did not, he cannot go, go without doing the video, so he sent me the video and I will share with the aldermen so you can see the two-hour video that he sent, uh, for his, uh, his ceremony, but we definitely want to thank him.
Yes, yes. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Smith?
Uh, yes, uh, did not mention, did not mention the time of the meeting, the time of the meeting, monthly Town Hall is ten AM to noon, and also, I too want to express my condolences, uh, to the Tillman family. Uh, I've already shared so with, uh, Alderman Tillman, along with, uh, Director Tillman, and, uh, I understand how that feels. That's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Navarrette, uh, unfinished business?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would just like to express my condolences, uh, to Alderman Tillman and Director Tillman on the loss, the best of anyone who lived on through you, Alderman Tillman, through the family. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Mr. Treasurer, you got any unfinished business?
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity. I'd like to also extend my condolences to Director Cheryl Tillman on the loss of her father and our esteemed colleague Alderman Tillman on the loss of his grandfather. Uh, please accept our deepest condolences.
Thank you, sir.
City Attorney, do we have, we don't have executive session, no items? Uh, I know in the past, Alderman Patton has said our record has been, uh, you know, six forty-nine, but I think we're breaking that, Alderman Patton, I know he's not on the call. Uh, with there being no further business to come before the City Council, is there a motion to adjourn at six forty-five PM?
So moved.
Motion made by Alderman Williams, second by Alderman Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at six forty-five PM. Thank you, everyone.